Good afternoon, everybody. I will call the meeting to order. Welcome to the August 19th Regina Planning Commission meeting. Reports considered by the commission at today's meeting will be considered by city council at its meeting scheduled for September 10th. The deadline to register as a delegation for the city council meeting is at 12:00 PM on Monday, September 8th. May I have a motion to approve the agenda at the call of the chair with the following adjustments, just one, adding the list of delegations? Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Any opposed? Carried. May I also have a motion to approve the minutes of the July 22nd RPC meeting? Council Raschevich, any errors or omissions? Any opposed? Also carried. We will move immediately to our delegation for RPC 25-22. Oh, it's Robert, right here, yeah. Robert Byers, representing Namarind Housing Corporation in Regina, Saskatchewan, who's here. And 23 as well? Both, or just with one? He's coming up by himself? Okay. Robert, you want to come up? I thought they were coming together, no? Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Did you want to have them together? They're going to indicate they were together.
Yeah, they are together. You are together, so, yeah, we wouldn't have you separate. So, Nick Sackville, representing Big Block Construction from Saskatoon. Gentlemen, welcome. Please introduce yourselves for the record, the organization you're representing, if any, and what city or town you reside in. You'll have five minutes to address the commission, after which you'll have the opportunity to respond to any questions that the members of the commission may have for you. Please go ahead.
Is this light supposed to be red? Okay.
Yes, you're on.
I'm Robert Byers from Namarind Housing. I forgot the directions and I live in Regina. That's good. Do you want me to continue with my presentation? Okay. Okay, so I'm the CEO of Namarind Housing. We're an indigenous-led affordable housing provider. Here in Regina, we're a self-sustaining affordable housing provider, which makes us a little different than a lot of nonprofits, meaning that we have businesses and social enterprises that, from the profits from that, allow us to be the affordable housing provider. And we own a mall in town, and we own a pharmacy, and we provide property management, and we own a couple of hundred properties. So this isn't totally new to us, but a new development is new to us. And we were pretty happy to see that planning and development is recommending that we move forward with the development, so that's exciting to us. We've... We always say that what we do at Namarind, we do to try and make our community better, meaning the city of Regina. And I think being a part of the revitalization of the downtown and 11th Avenue is also exciting to us. And I think part of the revitalization of downtown is bringing the potential of 120 more people downtown, that'll live downtown. And I think when we talk about safety, I think the more people that are there makes any area more safe. So, I... You know, I gotta try and throttle back a bit, but I really look forward to the opportunity to be a part of the downtown community and to help that community thrive. And one of the things that's happened in the last couple of years is that we've been working with Big Block. And Big Block really supports our vision. And it just so happens that they do modular housing. And now CMHC is becoming what they call Canada Builds. And that's what they support, because it's quicker, it's more efficient, it's energy-efficient. It just makes... I'm probably cutting into Nick's presentation, but we fell in love with modular housing, and we've toured modular housing, we've toured some of Big Block's modular housing, and I think it's a real step forward for all of us, actually. You know, one of the other things, I guess, that it brings to the downtown is we have one of the buildings is going to be an amenity space, so that we can have it as almost like a, you know, a bit of a learning center, but we can also have that space for other outside groups that maybe just need a small space to come and meet and do whatever they do. You know, we're close to the park, we're close to the library, we're close to the buses. It just really works for the people that'll live there. And I think I'll leave it at that. Just thanks a lot for your time, and I'll look forward to your decision.
Do you have some formal comments to make?
I do, yes.
Please go ahead.
I have a couple of minutes here, so. Good afternoon, thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of this project. My name's Nick Sackville, I'm the VP of Community Development with Big Block Construction, and I'm based in Saskatoon. Big Block is a Saskatchewan-based design builder and developer, and we specialize in delivering innovative, community-focused housing projects across the province, including right here in Regina. Since 2021, we've delivered over 150 affordable housing units in Regina, helping the city meet the city's housing needs with projects that are high-quality, cost-effective, and delivered on time. We're also proud of being the builder of the Horse Dance Lodge, an indigenous-led transitional housing project that won the 2023 Green Build of the Year Award from the Regina and Region Home Builders Association. That project is a testament to what's possible when good policy, strong partnerships, and practical execution come together. And so, the proposal before you today is a continuation of our mission to deliver high-impact housing in Regina. And I'd like to speak a little bit about why we think the project at 1840 Lorne is worth supporting. So the project's aligned with policy and grounded in reality. This application advances Regina's official community plan and downtown plan. It delivers indigenous-led, realistic, and shovel-ready housing that meets the needs of the moment. It's aligned with affordability targets, climate objectives, and the city's reconciliation commitments. The site's currently vacant and underutilized, and this proposal turns it into housing that works within the realities of today's construction and financing climate. It's not a new precedent, but a practical and right-size response to a unique opportunity. The residential-only design is key to this project's feasibility. Introducing commercial space at grade would compromise the project's financing and viability, especially given the weak retail absorption downtown. The result would be a delay, and Regina cannot afford to delay housing downtown any longer. This project's the right housing in the right place, and it's right now. It'll add 48-stack townhomes totaling 111 bedrooms for up to 160 new downtown residents. That's a 39% population increase on the site, generating over 800,000 in discretionary spending to support downtown businesses. This is a walkable, family-friendly alternative to towers, a thoughtful mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units with ample... Okay, thank you. Ample off-street parking. It meets real identified demand from more than 800 people on housing waitlists, especially young families and working professionals. It also directly supports a more diverse, vibrant, and livable downtown core, helping to reverse the 36% population decline downtown since 2016. And this development is smart, sustainable urban growth. The design brings street-oriented homes that increase safety, walkability, and connection to downtown amenities. The architectural style's urban, modern, and infused with indigenous-inspired elements that reflect the true spirit of this place. We're also aiming to make this one of the most energy-efficient buildings in Regina. Modular construction is quicker, quieter, and greener, reducing disruption while delivering higher density and paving the way for further downtown revitalization. In short, this proposal brings the right housing in the right place at the right time, and we're ready to deliver. Thank you again for your time and for your ongoing leadership in supporting practical, high-impact housing solutions in Regina.
Thank you for your presentations, Robert and Nick. I'm now going to open it up to my team. Do any commission members have questions of the delegation? Council Raschevich?
Do I have to go through the chair? Through the chair. I guess, you know, one of my questions, I guess, initially the plan was like some high-rise with some commercial on the bottom, and then, I guess, now you're coming to this design, and I guess, some of this, you know, I guess, feedback I've heard is because there's no commercial on Lorne, on 11th, sorry, on 11th, that, you know, some people, you know, that's their opinion, that they're kind of against it, you know? Is it a possibility for, I guess, maybe some spaces at the bottom of Lorne to be, you know, if they weren't rented, could they be commercial-ready, maybe, or something like that? Is that possible? Do you want me to...
Yeah, you can.
We worked closely with city admin on this specific topic, and the reason for kind of moving away from that commercial podium level on the main level is just the viability of it at this time. We spoke with real estate experts who unfortunately revealed to us that it's not viable in the current economic climate to develop commercial spaces, and unfortunately would cost more than what we'd be able to kind of generate in terms of revenue, what Namarind would be able to generate in terms of revenue. And then, it did complicate the pro forma in terms of our funding partners as well. So, we sought a compromise in working with admin, where we've kind of extended the height of that first level and added, you know, ramp access so that in the future, that could become a bistro or a coffee shop or that kind of thing. So there is the definite possibility.
Right.
And we've also made some kind of improvements to the streetscape in the design as well, so that that little area kind of on the corner of Lorne and 11th can act as a bit of a commercial courtyard or kind of a refuge space in downtown. So, we've tried to create some amenity space for the public realm, as well as look forward into the future for potential where, you know, once we've added all these families downtown, there will be a viable opportunity to add commercial space in the future.
Okay. But anyways, I guess what I'm hearing is there's the possibility.
Yes.
I guess, there is the possibility.
Yes.
Exactly, yeah. So, that's good, okay. Thanks.
Yep, of course.
Next up is Ms. Wilson.
Perfect, through you, the chair. I guess one of my questions, I've been on this committee for five years, I think I'm one of the longest-serving, and I think my very first meeting was one of your presentations on this, but I do remember it was 170 units. We were talking about a daycare, like there were other services, including a daycare and like a long... I've been really excited for this project, and I am a little disappointed it's townhouses and middle, like, not high-density, so I am struggling a little bit. If you could walk me through sort of like even the dropping of the daycare from this and some of those, that service sort of social purpose I think it had in the beginning, I'm just curious, your vision now or where that has dropped off along the process?
Do you want to?
Yeah.
Go ahead, yeah.
Okay, sure. Yeah, I think it's just the economic reality of where we find ourselves, right? Construction costs have continued to go up, especially in the last five years. They're probably nearly, you know, I don't know exactly the numbers, but we're coming in at 50%, probably higher than what we were in 2019, 2020. And so we've had to scale back the plans. There is also, you know, this is a bit inside baseball in terms of, you know, the difference between apartment style and townhome style, and what we're proposing here, more of an urban-townhome style, where the cost per square foot of construction are a bit lower, and so that allows the project to be viable. Unfortunately, as we've kind of been walking this path alongside with Namarind for the last couple of years, the goalposts with funding partners have continued to move forward. And it's not that we wouldn't love to see the initial proposal, and we did entertain that for quite some time in partnership with Namarind, but after successive conversations with funding partners, it just wasn't in the cards in terms of, you know, the viability that they were expecting for a project like this. And then maybe I would get Robert to speak a little bit about, you know, I understand it's not daycare and that kind of stuff on the site itself, but as we know, Namarind is a social kind of force in the city of Regina, and so there's a lot of other opportunities. Maybe Robert can speak to those as well.
Yeah, and I would say, I agree, Kathleen, it was a 170-unit place with all of the, you know, the commercial space, and just how things have changed, that started over 10 years ago. And like Nick said, the funding partners kept changing. It became almost a... I don't want it to sound negative, because it wasn't, but it was a bit of a moving target sometimes. And then the funding just started to become less and less to where we are now, and it was still important for us to bring families downtown and to look after the families that we serve. And yes, a daycare, yes, a grocery store, those would be great, but it just won't work the way we're doing things now. And for us, it's going to be all about the housing. We run other businesses and we do other things, but it's not going to work downtown for us.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, through the chair. I have a couple of questions. So, can, I think I heard in your comments that maybe the financing of the project got a little more complicated. Can you speak to that just a little bit? Was it through, I heard CMHC in there, was it more complicated with multiple things and just pure housing was easier? Or can you just explain that a little bit for us to understand better?
Yeah, so CMHC would be the primary funding partner on this project, and I... It's tough for me, I don't, it's... I can speak to what I observe and what I see, but I think as the kind of true-to-liberal government wound down, and now we have kind of new players who are looking at spinning up other organizations that will steward, you know, dollars for funding for housing projects like this, I think that as the kind of budgets became constrained, the criteria and the goalposts became harder to achieve. And even before, we had, you know, been retained by Namarind to start working with them on this project, they were basically told that the... project, they were basically told that the previous iteration of their proposal was just far too ambitious for this market, for this organization, and that's disappointing, but I think, you know, I'm in the business of, you know, solving the housing crisis and getting units built. So, I guess, you know, from our perspective, it was either this or just kind of give up, and I don't think that that is something that any of us really wanted to entertain. So, yeah, in terms of, you know, the additional commercial space, I think we definitely did see the rural shift a little bit during our application process, where they were expecting a higher level of what's called debt coverage ratio on commercial spaces as opposed to residential spaces. That was a new development that kind of happened during the design process, and that was one of the items that did kind of, you know, paint the picture for us that commercial space may no longer be viable for this project. And it is unfortunate, and I do, you know, understand, this was, if you would have asked me two years ago, you know, if this is what I thought we would have ended up with at this time, I wouldn't have said that. I would have been with the community and with folks like you saying, yeah, let's do what we had initially hoped we could do, which is add this kind of, you know, multi-story, highly-dense, commercial space. And, yeah, unfortunately, that just wasn't in the cards, so.
Okay, thank you. Through the chair, just have a quick question regarding the floor plan. In the, when that was handed out to us, there is, I think it's between gridlines five and seven, so it's at the end of the main floor, there's some space that's shown quite a bit differently than the others. Can you explain, you touched on this already, but can you explain the programming or what that space is kind of intended for? It shows kind of a large space with a few tables in it and a kitchen off to the side, so.
I'll speak to the design specifically, and then I'll let Robert speak to their vision for what they'd like to use that space for. So, with, in working with admin, and I understand it's a scaled-back proposal in terms of what was originally envisioned for a commercial space, but we worked with admin in terms of making sure that that space level up into the entrance of that space at the east and north side, so it is sort of designed as almost a commercial spec, you'd call it. And again, we added that plaza in the front there to kind of enhance the indoor and outdoor public realm. And so we've kind of created a space that can be used for a number of different activities, and also looks forward to the future in terms of potential future commercial uses. And then maybe Robert can speak to what they have envisioned in terms of the programming in that space.
Yeah, and I touched on it briefly, but really it would be there mainly for our tenants, you know, so they can have get-togethers, so we can have get-togethers with them, so we can have different teachings or very, or learnings, whatever you'd like to call them, you know? And we thought it would be also a place where some of the business, the nearby business... It's not a social enterprise to us, it's more of a community gathering place, because we really feel that the development, even though it's changed a lot, it's also changed in a really positive way, because I feel that we're building a little community on that half a block. And when you've got people living together, you know, kind of at the street level, and maybe sitting on their step or, because I always tell the story of going for a walk in one of the cities, and I saw these two older guys sitting on the step having a smoke and a cup of coffee and laughing, and then you, you know, a couple doors down, it was a little boutique selling dresses and stuff like that, and then, you know, then it was people living, and then it was a little coffee shop. And then you think of the revitalization of 11th Avenue, and I think, man, that would be awesome, because I remember when we talked about this was going to be a walking street and a shopping street, we're walking and shopping, and it's all taken people, right? And if we can bring 48 families downtown, it gets me excited, actually, because I think it's sort of going to change the dynamic of our downtown, to have people living right downtown and being a part of that community. And I think the more people downtown, the safer it is, and I really get excited about it, because I think if we're way up here, I don't care really so much what's happening down there, but if I'm down there, then this is my community, and I'm going to look after it. And like I say, we can use Victoria Park, we can use the library, the buses are there to go to other places, and who knows? In my mind, I always see a little small grocery store there. Might not be ours, but somebody may open a little grocery store just to service those families, the people at the tree and all, that high-rise, you know, because there's a lot of people there that have to go outside of the downtown to get their groceries, and I think this will be the start of really bringing the people back to the heart of the city.
One final comment. I think Kathleen's the only one on here longer than I am, and I remember some previous representations from NAMRIN, and I think it was one of the few, very few times we voted against a recommendation by the administration, and it was to extend the time of their housing, or their, sorry, their commercial parking lot. And so I'm happy to see it's come around and there's a project at the end of it, so thanks very much.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Sontek.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and through you. First of all, congratulations on the presentation, which will give you some sense of what I think of the proposal as well. You talked about the amenities room, would that be available for planning commission as well? No kidding.
Of course.
Seriously, though, you alluded to it, but I'm curious, first of all, let me back up a little bit. I've seen, I've had the good fortune of visiting several of the construction projects that you've put together, first of all, in Saskatoon, and the first time I was expecting, just as your name describes, block, and not much to it, and I was very pleasantly surprised to feel how livable the space was, so that quite impressed me. And since that time, I've not been overly surprised by what I've seen in some of the projects, so, good for you. The, you alluded to the uniqueness, not the uniqueness, you alluded to incorporating some indigenous cultural components. I am curious if there are, it doesn't have to be, but I'm curious whether you've been able to incorporate other unique features in the building, not necessarily indigenous, but just in, well, Robert will know, but this is a big chunk of my background as well, affordable housing, but I found many times in trying to accommodate federal-provincial programs and all of the things, all the restrictions they put on, that it almost makes some of the space unlivable sometimes, because they make bedrooms, they don't realize families lots of times have, you know, three, four, five, six children, and they squash bedrooms together and stuff like that. And so I'm curious if there's anything unique about the design, or do you feel you've been able to accommodate the clientele that you're looking to serve?
I would say, yeah, like, we, we've, this is a product, I guess you could call it, that we've used in other jurisdictions, in the sort of more, you know, affordable-to-market rental kind of area of the continuum. So, you can go to Calgary, for example, and you can find this exact floor plan and layout that's being used by a developer there, and they're renting it at market. So, I wouldn't say that these are particularly constrained in terms of the size. They're efficient and, you know, urban, but they're not cramped. In terms of some of the unique features, definitely this is the first urban-style development that we, as an organization, have taken on. We generally play in the suburban areas of the cities that we build in, so it's a unique implementation of this specific product. And, you know, I speak to product because it has benefits in terms of, you know, for NAMRIN, it keeps costs manageable, we're not sort of, you know, redesigning something new every time for every single person. We can kind of use the expertise that we've gained over successive projects, and it's more of a refinement instead of a redesign, so it has benefits in terms of the cost and the predictability and the ability to deliver when we have a consistent product, just like any manufacturing, any manufactured product that you'd find, you know, mass production, you want to make it the same as much as possible. It's similar to vehicles in the sense that, you know, we can provide some customizations in terms of the exterior, the roofline, the materials that we use on the interior and the exterior, but fundamentally, the bones are identical, and that allows us to deliver housing at scale. In terms of some of the unique features outside, like I mentioned, the urban style, so it's being kind of raised more off the sidewalk with those front steps, and the little patios out front, as Robert mentioned, that will kind of create a bit of a space for people to hang out in front of their homes and to create that sort of lively streetscape and interaction that we love to see in an urban environment. That definitely, you know, is an advantage over an apartment style where you have a bit of sterility on the street level, so there's that. We also were challenged by CMHC to achieve actually a high level of accessibility in this development, and so I believe we've achieved in the design 20% of the units being accessible, and this is not just grab bars and wheelchair-turning radiuses, this is actually a CSA standard that includes wheelchair-turning radiuses in every room, it includes full roll-under countertops in the kitchens and bathrooms, so this is sort of the gold standard of accessibility that goes over and above what you would typically see in a development, where you're generally, you know, looking at 10% accessible units, and, you know, just a grab bar in the bathroom kind of thing is enough to meet those requirements. So, definitely that. And then, in order to achieve that high level of accessibility, we've actually brought the interior of the site up a little bit, so while it's at kind of, while it's above street level from the sidewalk, it's at grade in the interior of the site, so people will kind of, you know, have that barrier-free access to the inside, from the inside kind of courtyard corridor there. And I've spoken about the plaza and the commercial space that we're providing as well. And we're really excited to be collaborating once again with David Fortin and his team, who was the architect on the Horst Hans Lodge, and he's, you've seen the renderings there, he's obviously taken a lot of inspiration from indigenous culture, and we've expressed that in the building design, and we're really excited about how it looks and really hopeful that we get to move forward on this project, so I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, very good. Thank you very much. That's very helpful. Just as an aside, by the way, I guess I've been on this commission longer than I thought as well, because I was here for that vote as well. My last question was in, I don't know whether Commissioner Wilson was going to ask this question as well, but in the design, I'm not an architect, so I don't know, but in the design, would, speaking to more units, could you add on to this at all? Is it structurally designed that you could add more units, or not?
So the reason why you see a stacked townhome as a kind of common build form is, it actually is fire regulations. And so, we would, you'd have to go to an apartment style if you wanted to increase the density. We're basically at the max in terms of what we can achieve on the site with this build form, without going to, you know, common corridors, you know, two stairwells, fire systems, sprinkler systems, that kind of thing. So, this really represents the highest level intensification that we can achieve while being financially viable for this particular project. So unfortunately, no, and it's not a limit of the structure or anything like that, it's just a matter of being able to provide a quick and safe, egress path for the folks who are living in the upper units down into the street level. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's it. Thanks very much.
Ms. Morgan.
Hello. I've got a few questions for you, kind of riding off of Commissioner Wilson's question. Speaking of timelines, because she mentioned five years ago, I'm just wondering about the timelines, what that's going to look like, what it's also going to look like for street closures for park, or, sorry, traffic, because it's right downtown.
Yeah.
So I'm wondering how much time will, or how long will the streets be blocked off? How is that going to affect how everything moves around the site?
So, as mentioned, and Robert did a really good job of talking a little bit about the benefits of modular construction, that we anticipate the construction to take somewhere in the realm of 14 months, once we begin, which we hope will be in the spring or even in the fall this year. And so, one of the great things about modular construction is we do most of the construction off-site, and then we bring the blocks into the location to be craned in place. So there will be disruption, that's kind of inevitable with a construction project, but it will actually be a lot more minimal than what you'd expect. So, the current kind of phasing plan that we've developed for this project means that we'll kind of crane each building one at a time, and so it'll take us a day, basically, of craning for each building. And so we do anticipate having to potentially close a lane or a street along Lorne or 11th as we bring those modules in by truck, but it'll be one day, and then we'll open the street back up, and we'll continue our activities on-site where we're not disrupting traffic flow. So, you know, so let's say, you know, ambitiously, we can achieve this project in as little as four kind of crane days where we're disrupting traffic. Otherwise, minimal disruptions to the surrounding area and just really kind of focus on the site itself.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Gassier, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. Thank you both for the presentation. I'm curious, Mr. Byers, if this is successful, would you see similar projects potentially being built with your organization elsewhere in Regina?
I would hope so. You know, there's a real need for housing. We're also the community entity for both funding streams, for the reaching home homelessness strategy, so we're for designated communities and the indigenous homelessness funding stream. And I'm a big believer, we're big believers, that housing specific to a demographic needs to be built, so whether it's, you know, like, small homes for people, or bigger homes for people, or townhouses like this. So, it's something we do see in the future.
Okay. Thank you. And, you know, without asking too much inside information, does, do you have other sites that you either own or like have access to that you would be able to build something similar like this if this project was successful?
Like I said, we own a couple of hundred houses scattered around Regina, so it all depends on what happens with the bylaws.
Right.
Right? What are they allowed? Do they allow a fourplex? We could build a fourplex on a wide enough lot, right?
Yeah.
And we think that's important. We need fourplexes as well.
So you don't have, sorry...
We don't have a place where we can do 50 units.
You don't have another lot.
Not this big, no.
This size. So, the concern that I have is, there's, I don't know, two, two and a half dozen, say, neighborhoods in the city, and if you were to propose this in any of the others, I would throw my best metal around your neck. I mean, I absolutely agree with you that this is what we need. It's tough for me, and I'm not committed to standing in the way, but it's tough for me to support this particular proposal when I think about downtown as, the goal of downtown to be kind of the cultural and commercial hub where we would have assembly spaces, where we would have daycares, where we would have commercial, both retail and services. It's tough to me, for me to support this, even though I definitely support housing downtown, I almost wonder if this isn't enough people to provide sort of that critical threshold for services geared towards them, and also has sort of the type of development that might be better suited as sort of an exemplar in other neighborhoods, rather than sort of the downshift in downtown. And I'm wondering if you can help me to square that vision, because I genuinely appreciate what you're trying to do, and I genuinely appreciate this proposal. I just, it's really, it's hard for me not to think that this is the wrong place for it.
Well, I don't want to turn it into a bed... Well, I don't want to turn it into a bit of a debate. But, you know, I'm not sure what the vacancy rate is in the downtown right now for commercial space, but I know that there is one. And I know to bring people down, they're talking of charging, say, $10 a square foot for rent. Well, at $10 a square foot, you'd never make money on developing commercial space, new commercial space. And we're an affordable housing provider. And I just cannot see an investment in commercial space downtown right now. And in 10 years, maybe. But then, don't forget, our development is future ready for retail. But for now, we hope people move in. Because I think anytime you're trying to revitalize something, it takes people.
Okay.
And we bring that.
Through the chair, I do appreciate your hesitance to turn this into a debate. And I, so I appreciate your response. Thank you very much.
And may I say a few words on the topic? You know, from my perspective, you have a developer in Regina who's willing to put forward a proposal for housing downtown. And I get the sense of, and I mean, you know, Saskatoon is very similar in this regard, that we struggle with bringing and attracting people downtown. And there's sort of a constant chicken and egg scenario we have where we would love a downtown grocery store, but, you know, we can't, nobody's willing to make that investment because there's still people downtown. And so, you know, what I would say is there are, you know, according to some of the city's own studies that they've commissioned, upwards of 500 vacant and underutilized sites in and around the downtown core. And I understand the concern and I can sympathize, you know, with your position in terms of wanting to see a higher density development here. And I would just say that, you know, you have an opportunity now to add housing to the downtown core and that there will be other opportunities for, you know, intensification and densification. There's lots of opportunity in the future for that kind of development. And I would not sort of, you know, underestimate the willingness of NAMRAN to bring this proposal forward in the form that it is. Because that's going to, as Robert and I have been mentioning, you know, discussing here today, it's, it's bringing people downtown. It is, it is an increase in the population downtown. It is a start towards the revitalization that everyone, you know, everyone wants to see. So I would, I would consider that aspect in terms of when you're making your decision today.
Mr. Adams.
Yes, thank you. Through the chair, I'll be brief, just because I know everyone's had lots of questions. But mostly, thank you for your presentation and your answers. They've been very informative. And certainly, I can say personally, I'm very familiar with both NAMRAN and Big Block and I have a tremendous amount of respect for both of your organizations. So it's great to see you here today. The two questions are really simple. You spoke generally about this, but just in terms of the business model, you mentioned at the Calgary site, it's rented like at market. Like is your vision, and I'm not sure of the conditions with CMHC, is it intended to be at or below market rates for rental housing? Is that generally the model that you envision?
Yeah, ours is affordable.
Affordable, yes. So you would describe affordable as market or less?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's super helpful. And I know this is a little bit of a sensitive question and just do the best you can to answer it. But respecting that you are yourselves a non-Indigenous, or an Indigenous nonprofit, how would you describe the general support from the Indigenous community and other entities like, say, the tribal council or individual nations? Like, I would expect they would be generally supportive of Indigenous entities advancing affordable housing opportunities, but recognizing you are, you know, and it is a competitive market and there are others, you know, advancing that. But would you, would you generally describe, or did you reach out to other Indigenous entities and say, you know, would you provide a letter of support or, like, could you just speak generally to that?
Yeah, we didn't ask for letters of support.
Yeah.
But we know we support.
Yeah.
Each other.
Yeah.
And it's not a competition. It's more of, we have so many people on our wait lists.
Sure.
And, you know, sometimes it's, it's like, you know, this family is in dire straits.
Yeah.
Do you have anything?
Yeah.
We have those kind of conversations, you know? So when Silver Sage opened up the Horst Dance Lodge.
Sure, yeah.
We were invited to go on tours. We were invited to the opening. We celebrate the good things, you know? And we get together once in a while and.
Sure.
Complain about the bad things. But mostly, we were there to support each other. So this happening, and also, I guess, and that's the local providers, but also looking and working with other First Nations now. Because of what we do in homelessness, we're getting more and more people from outside of our community.
Yeah.
Want to connect with the people in their community, in this community. And we think that's a way to really reduce and solve the homelessness issues that we face. Because if it's not about connection with family and community, then people are going to wander the streets for a long time. This project isn't about homelessness. But I'm just telling you about the outside organizations and communities that we work with.
I get that, and it's probably implicit in your governance model. Like, I would expect your board would have representation from the community itself.
Yes.
Just one last question, just in the future, Robert, do you, could you envision a scenario? Because you did talk and there were questions about the funding partners, but, I mean, could this kind of a model ever include like other equity partners? Like, could you imagine other, other projects that, you know, had other equity partners outside of, say, CMHC? Because oftentimes, I know these projects, without the feds, there's no, no chance of moving forward. But, I mean, is there a model, like, can, have you illuminated or can you illuminate a bit of an emerging model where others could do these kind of housing development? I'm starting to think down the line about Taylor Field, you know, those kinds of things.
I think that would be a great opportunity to build a community there.
Yeah.
But I think the way things are changing with the, with the federal government, I think the opportunity to partner with outside organizations is getting better. Build Canada Homes, Federation of Canadian Municipalities.
Right, yeah.
There's some Indigenous organizations. There's an organization called the National Indigenous Collaborative Housing Incorporated, who were given $300 million to invest in Indigenous housing across Canada. And in 18 months, they were giving keys to families. Not all were ready, but I mean, they started to give that. They're now in negotiations with the federal government for more funding. So I see that opportunity because one of the things that NAMRAN is, and I'm not good at telling the NAMRAN story, but we do, we're a self-sustaining organization and we're involved in all sorts of things. Like, we've got about $9 million of our own money tied up in this. We don't have debt. You know, we're an organization that tries to do things on its own. We're not good at asking. This is the first time that we've reached out to CMHC. And lo and behold, they kind of disbacked CMHC almost, but, you know, that's another story and I think that'll come back. They're just going to call it Build Canada Homes. But, you know, I think we were lucky enough to connect with Big Block. And then the federal minister came along, or the prime minister came along and said, you know, I really think modular homes is something that can work. Because he went back and thinking about the little wartime houses that are all over Regina.
Sure, yeah.
And he said, you know what? That really worked. Why can't modular housing? And these guys are, have years of expertise. I remember meeting his boss, I can't remember his name, not Alex. But anyways, probably seven or eight years ago when they were first getting going and now they're, you know, they're going concern and we're really proud to be able to work with them on this project. But like I say, we're involved in so many things that we get to see what's coming, you know? And I just really get excited about this project. I think it's.
Understand.
The way of the future for downtown Regina.
Excellent.
It's really well.
Well, thank you.
If I may add some color. I don't want to take away from what Robert said because it was amazing, but I work with a lot of nonprofit groups, including Indigenous groups. And I think this is the kind of housing that we need to see more of in our country and it'll actually enhance affordability overall. To bring in competition with traditional for-profit landlords from organizations like NAMRAN who are providing affordable housing at or below market and housing cooperatives and those kinds of models, they really just force traditional landlords to compete in that market. And so I'd love to see a future in Canada where, you know, a significant proportion of our housing is owned and led by organizations like NAMRAN. And that will enhance affordability for everyone. If there's tons of that kind of housing, why would anyone pay more? But we do rely on government funding to provide that deep level of affordability. And so when you just, when you asked about other equity partners, certainly we're in conversations with the city of Regina for, you know, the funding programs through Housing Accelerator Fund and, and the Housing Incentives Program. We're in conversations with the province. Where it becomes a little bit more challenging is a traditional equity partner is expecting to see a return on their investment. So that impacts the pro forma of the project. And that's just a reality of the situation. But very grateful to be working with groups like NAMRAN to bring this kind of housing to market because it's what we need more of in our country to help the affordable housing crisis that we're experiencing.
Good, thank you very much. Counselor Rashovich?
Yeah, through the chair. I was just kind of, I mean, the renderings look, I mean, they look nice, right?
Yeah, the architect did a fantastic job.
Yeah, but I was just kind of wondering, like, the exterior look, like the materials.
Yeah.
You know, is it going to be, you know, in my mind, I'm thinking, geez, you don't want, you don't want vinyl.
No, I agree. I don't want that either.
Like, you know, it just gives the feeling when you walk by or something. You're just like, oh, you know, it's not the quality sort of thing.
Yeah.
You kind of want, right?
Yeah.
You know, I was just kind of curious what the, what you guys are thinking just about in terms of exterior, you know? Because when people walk by, you know, you want to go, oh, man, I want to live there.
Yeah. Yeah, we're certainly targeting durable materials. We went back and forth with Jeremy and his team a little bit on this. Unfortunately, brick or brick facade, whether it's real brick or a veneer product, is extremely expensive. And so we've tried to, we've tried to find a balance here where we want to, we want this development to fit in with the area, which is primarily brick facade in the, in the kind of neighboring, you know, properties. And so we've tried to strike a balance here where it would be cost prohibitive to make the entire facade brick. But we've tried to place brick in kind of more prominent areas of the building to kind of tie that, that brick from the existing buildings into this new building. And then we've used, we've, we're proposing corrugated metal, which is a durable material that, that will, you know, it won't be vinyl. And then there'll be, you know, the odd flourish here and there of other kinds of materials and stuff like that. But we're really trying to target something that is, is cost effective for an affordable housing build, but also durable in terms of long-term maintenance and that, you know, integrates well with the fabric of that area. I hope that answers the question.
Yeah, okay. Okay, then I was, I know, I know Kathleen was asking, sorry, you were asking about daycare and I just, you know, I was just sort of thinking in my head, you know, the YN WCA is going to have, just opening up with daycare, just over here. They just announced that. So I, you know, just kind of, I was thinking of that. And then I was thinking about the, you know, you were talking about, you were, I think, mentioning the guy sitting on the porch? Well, you know, I'm thinking of Yorkville, Toronto. There's townhouses downtown. I mean, I grew up in Toronto, you know, and we have a lot of, there's residential in Toronto downtown, just off like, you know, that's Young Street.
Do you have a question?
Yes, so, yeah. So my question is, you know, I guess some of your ideas, you know, like when you've traveled, kind of spurred you to some, doing an idea like what you were seeing in another city? I guess that's my question, correct?
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
I know in meeting with some of the administration, you know, we talked about that. And I told the story about, I think I already told about walking down the street and the two old guys sitting there and then.
When was that?
That was in Montreal.
Montreal.
And what I realized was, I think they're probably my age. But anyway, I was calling them old guys when I was walking by.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I think, I guess, do you guys, I could ask it, Ben, but when's the last time there's been a development in downtown, like in Regina, like something like this? When's the last time there's been development from, that you know of? I can't remember.
Well, and certainly the statistics that we.
Okay.
The statistics that we found spoke to a decline in downtown population, which is, which is really unfortunate.
Yeah.
It's.
I'll ask it, Ben.
Yeah, not the direction we want it to go in, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to commend my colleagues for some great questions. Hard for me to come up with some of my own, but as someone who's built a few things, I do have a few. Regarding the green features and specifically the monthly cost for a resident there in terms of heating and cooling the place, is there something that you're doing special there that can help in reducing those costs?
Yeah, so in terms of the primary funding that we're pursuing with CMHC, they, all these, all these elements are considered. And so we're, we're trying, we're playing a numbers game in terms of our financing with CMHC. We're trying to optimize the number of points that our proposal achieves while also, you know, trying to stay within a, within a budget to make the pro forma work. And so when we talk about energy efficiency, we're trying to achieve somewhere in the range of 30 to 40% better than what a standard home would achieve in terms of energy efficiency. And then we're also, you know, and that has an impact on the monthly operating cost for folks. It'll be, it'll be affordable from that perspective, you know, and, you know, the homes, some of them will be, you know, less than 1,000 square feet, so that should be generally very affordable for, for people. So it's just sort of more dictated by the funding itself. But one of the great things about modular construction is that it's very easy to achieve high levels of energy efficiency and it's also extremely easy to achieve high levels of air tightness, which is the big, the big part that we try to optimize when we're optimizing energy efficiency. You can put, you know, two-foot thick walls on the exterior of a building, but if it's leaky, you've wasted all your money. And so, you know, assembling the modules in a factory allows for that high level of quality control and care while it's being constructed. And so we've been able to achieve levels of air tightness on multi-unit buildings that single-family buildings would only hope to achieve using traditional methods. And there's a project in Regina that we did under a pilot project with NRCan and the Canadian Home Builders Association where we were able to achieve less than 0.5 air changes per hour on a multi-unit building.
Wow.
The, the required standard was two and 0.5 would be respectable for a high energy efficiency passive house or net zero home, single-family home that we're building today. So we're able to achieve that high level of energy efficiency very easily using modular.
Impressive. Can you give me an indication of how many Saskatchewan people will be working and benefiting from building these?
So we have a few different manufacturing facilities that we can put a proposal out to, to construct these modules. So we've not yet selected. The, the goal here is to get past this kind of approval threshold, then we know that we can build this project. And then get our drawings a little bit further along and then be able to tender out for the modular supplier. We have two preferred suppliers. One is located in Manitoba and one is located in Saskatchewan. So, you know, there is a sort of element of, you know, optimization of transportation costs and cost per square foot for construction. But I, I will say, in terms of the onsite work, that would generally go to construction firms located here in Regina. In terms of, you know, landscaping, foundation work, interconnection of the electrical and plumbing and HVAC, exterior facade and roofing and all that other stuff that has to be done onsite after the modules are placed, it just makes very little sense for us to go. little sense for us to go outside the province. And really, it makes very little sense for us to go outside Regina to find those kinds of contractors. So on a project like this, I would estimate the modular portion to be somewhere in the range of 60 to 70% of the cost. It would be great if we could find a Saskatchewan supplier for that portion of the cost, but at least the balance would be local firms completing the work onsite there.
Excellent. Thank you for that. I want to ask you about your experience with our admin team. I know they're sitting right there. But I'd be happy to hear some feedback from you on a project like this that has taken some time to come to almost fruition. So do you have any feedback for, for us?
I do. I would say that the project is better for having collaborated with admin on this. It likely will end up being slightly more costly because of the interactions between us and admin. But I'm very proud of the proposal that we're putting forward today for consideration. It's a very handsome-looking development, and I think it fits within the urban fabric of the downtown. And that's in large part due to the process of discretionary use and going out for public comments and hearing from members of the community and hearing their feedback, and then integrating that into the building and, and working with Jeremy and Ben and their team in terms of adding, you know, those features that we've kind of discussed here in terms of the, the exterior, the plaza, the interface with the streetscape and the commercial style amenity area, and the kind of, you know, minimal setback from the sidewalk to the front of the building, and the kind of elevation of the building out of the, out of grade and up a few steps. So, yeah, I would say, overall, it has taken some time, a few months, to go through the process, but, but the result is good.
Great. Great to hear. Good job, team.
I'd like to answer as well. I would say in the last while that we started working more closely with Devin Autumn and Ben, it feels almost like a, like a collaboration. And, you know, they came to our office to get to, again, I guess, I would say, a better understanding of NAMRIN and what we do and what we're trying to achieve with this project. And we just left talking about more communication. And, you know, communication is key. And it doesn't mean we agree on everything, but communication is key. And we've had some really good communication, and I, I look forward to working with them in the future.
Excellent. That's great to hear.
We've appreciated the flexibility as well. And they're advancing some changes to the bylaw, which are allowing this kind of development to, to come forward. And so I guess the answer could have been nope, but it wasn't. And so we're grateful for that, for that flexibility.
My final question is, to the extent that it's possible, can we do a show and tell if this does go ahead as planned?
Absolutely. We love to bring people along for the ride and show off what we're able to achieve. And so, absolutely.
Excellent. All right. Do any commission members have any further questions? No, we've exhausted them all. Oh, it's a question, right?
Is there, do you guys have some projects here in Regina that you've done?
Yes, I mentioned the Horse Dance Lodge.
Horse Hand Lodge?
Horse Dance Lodge, which is.
Okay, I just want to go look.
It's beautiful.
Yeah, it's next to the Imperial School.
Okay.
It's by unique forests.
Yeah, and then we have two projects on either side of the St. Nicholas School, two stack townhome projects there for another client that we've worked with. And then we have a project in the northwest, I want to say it's called the Cornerstone Neighborhood?
Cornerstone.
Is that the right name?
I don't know.
Or the Cornerstone Development? It's, it's in the northwest near the new commercial development that's coming up there.
Is it, is it a house? Is it a house?
It's, it's a, it's a stacked townhome.
Stacked town.
Yeah, so three levels.
Okay.
Very similar in form to the proposal today.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Northwest. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you for addressing the commission, both of you. I ask that you please return to the gallery now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We will now consider item RPC 25-21 discretionary use, 1840 Lawrence Street, 2301 11th Avenue. I'll ask Mr. Fenton to please introduce the report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. So again, just to quickly reiterate, the proposed development is four stacked townhouse-style residential buildings consisting of 48 units in total, which are to be located at, two properties actually that are contiguous, 1840 Lawrence Street and 2301 11th Avenue, intersection of 11th Avenue and Lawrence Street. The proposed development is being reviewed through the discretionary use procedure due to the fact that the buildings are residential only and do not include street-level active uses such as shopping amenities or services. The key review factors for this application is compliance with Regina Downtown Neighborhood Plan and the Downtown Direct Control District of the zoning bylaw. And just to summarize very quickly, these documents generally support high-density mixed-use buildings with street-level shopping as the optimal development type for the property location. However, the neighborhood plan does include criteria for assessing residential-only buildings. And this criteria, sorry, the downtown, actually, both documents include criteria, but what I'm about to refer to is direct control district, an assessment of commercial viability, measures for integrating residential units with the street environment, and consideration of urban design impacts. So those three categories of criteria really form the basis of our review. And just to summarize, the design concept, which is the culmination of multiple submissions and reviews, is deemed to comply with the Downtown Neighborhood Plan and the zoning bylaw. Notably, measures have been included for integrating the residential units with the street, the elevation, elevation of the entranceways off the sidewalk, the setbacks, et cetera. Parking is set behind the buildings and not visible from the street. The amenity area was relocated from its original position to the intersection of 11th Avenue and Lawrence Street to activate that intersection. And as the applicant described, it includes design aspects that mimic a commercial unit. And lastly, building exteriors include design elements appropriate for downtown context. However, we do have a recommendation report where we note that as part of future reviews, we will require additional detail regarding building exteriors and landscaping. So we'll continue to work with the applicant on the exterior of the buildings and the landscaping element. But lastly, and importantly, in addition to the urban design benefits, the proposed development will transition these parcels which have been in a prolonged state of vacancy and underutilization to an active development, developed state, and will add additional resident population to the downtown, which will in turn help activate the downtown, which is probably the key consideration for all of this, which are a major consideration of the OCP Part A in the downtown plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I have someone move the recommendation? Mr. Sontek, do you wish to speak on the report? Okay. Any questions from commission members? I see a couple already. Ms. Wilson, go ahead.
Perfect. I have some comments and then a question. I am a, a big fan of this project and just the, the detail and thought that was put into it. I'm really hooked on the land use, I think, of this. I think these are great organizations. I used to run an inner-city community association. I understand how important NAMRIN is to the housing fabric of Regina. I am really struggling with this being 11th and Lauren and this prime real estate. We are spending all this money to revitalize Regina. We are seeing 90 units going up in, like, places like Douglas Park, but 48 townhouse style is, like, the best we can do for this piece of land that the city of Regina currently owns. It feels like a really big missed opportunity to me, I think, for our downtown Regina. And I am, I'm really hooked on that, and I'm not sure right now if I'm going to support this. I would be so in favor if it was anywhere else in the entire city, but I am really struggling. Like, I walked through this parking lot to go to the Curious the other day. And just like what Regina will look like and feel like if we're building townhouses in the heart of our downtown. I guess a question for the city. Can you confirm, like, the, the background on this? Like, the city of Regina currently owns this land, or it's been given to NAMRIN under the condition of, because this was originally City of Regina land, correct? Sorry, I threw you the chair.
Thank you for that clarifying question. I had my blinker on for the chair. I just wanted to confirm the city of Regina does not own this land. We did, the city did sell one of the parcels to NAMRIN a number of years ago, and I believe the other parcel was purchased from the province.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, I guess that's all of my, my questions on that. Thanks.
Mr. Aston?
Wait, thank you. Through the chair. My first question is, in the report, and I heard reiterated that it's a residential-only project, but we've also heard that there is a component of a space that's on the end of the building that's some bit of programming to be done. But will it out require extra discretionary use zoning approval, or is that inherent in what's being approved here? And should that be reflected in the report? Through the chair.
Through the chair. Just to clarify that the reason for this approval is for assessment of the, the project as proposed, which is for residential only along the main level. So that's ultimately what could happen. The downtown direct control district will allow, just by nature, the transition over time, if there is any demand for that, to commercial uses. So the zoning will not impede that. You don't need to consider that as an additional approval. There will be development permits and building permits required if that did come forward later on.
So there'll be no zoning per se, but it would be a development permit to change the space or do whatever.
That's correct.
Thank you. Second question. The, the one that caught my eye, well, two things, I guess, but the urban design considerations, can you just give us a little more information on what that would be? I, it's pretty odd in my time on this commission where it's spoken about the building and the finishes. Is it just the site and the development, or is there actually considerations of the building design as well? Through the chair.
Yeah, through the chair, this is a little bit different because it is one of the few places in the city of Regina that is designated as a direct control district. And within the direct control district in the downtown, we do have authority to require more detailed review in terms of sort of building orientation, things like window placement, door placement, materials considerations. So that's, that's why we were able to have those conversations with the developer to try to help this develop and kind of meet the overall intent of the downtown plan. So that's why you, you might have heard that, that sort of explanation in this particular project, whereas in other projects that are more, of a more general nature, we don't have that ability to, to have those conversations and really just evaluating based on some higher-level factors. That's what makes this a little bit different.
Just in response to that, are those considerations, then, would they all be administrative, or would they always come back to commission or council? Would there be things that might trigger that?
Through the chair, the intent here is that the, this forms the concept. There would be some variation potentially if, if, if we need to have those discussions. But by and large, the, the intent is that the ultimate product largely resemble this, and we have some administrative discretion to work out discussions as they come through the development permit process.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Gasser?
Thank you. Most of my questions have already been answered. And so I guess just as a discussion point, I would like to agree with and echo Commissioner Wilson. This is just such a great project, and I worry about coming off looking like a nimby, but I actually think I'm the, the reverse. Like, I kind of want you to build in my backyard. Please, in my backyard. By all means. I, but I, I'm coming down, for me, it comes down to the land use. I really appreciated the delegate's answer to my question. And, you know, if it, if we could, if we could make recommendations along a gradient, I would be pretty close to the middle. But we can't. And so I will be, I expect to be opposed to this recommendation because of the land use fit in the area. I really like the project. I, I think it's beautiful, and I hope that the delegates are proud of their work. I think the administration did a good job of coming to this recommendation, but I won't be supporting it with great difficulty. I, I just think if now is not the right time to build what we want downtown, then now is not the right time to build downtown. And I'm okay waiting until, until that right time comes. But I'd love to see this project anywhere else in the city. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Counselor Rashovich?
Through the chair. I know I asked the question of the delegates just about maybe on the, I guess, on 11th, they said could be some commercial ready, possibly. I'm just wondering, will you guys, you know, your comments on that?
Yeah, through the chair. Just to reiterate, the zoning bylaw won't prohibit that. It allows for flexibility to, to achieve that from a building standards perspective. You know, that, that's where some, some more analysis would be needed. The, the type of commercial land use may be, may be accommodated, depending on, depending on the sort of intensity of that, that land use. So some, some land uses that are more intense or more hazardous may be more difficult to feasibly locate within these units. More docile spaces like small offices or even retail, you know, boutiques and things like that are likely to be easier. So, you know, it, it really just depends on what's being proposed and what upgrades are required. And it'll be up to the, the owners of this project to assess the feasibility of accommodating it.
I hear what you're saying. Depends what it is.
Yeah.
Yeah. Like you mentioned, it could be a coffee shop boutique or, you know, something, something like that. You know, I just keep thinking, like in, like in Toronto, there's, in Yorkville, just on, just off Young Street, and they got townhouses, and they have little shops underneath those townhouses, and they become very kind of a trendy area because you got vintage vinyl, and you got the Tiki Hut, and, you know, and all those kind of places. So, no, that's good that the option is there for something like that. So I guess that's one of my questions. And I guess, so in terms of, I guess, property taxes and stuff, you know, for the city, you know, with the development like this, I mean, would there be, I was just wondering what kind of benefit for the city would be, you know, have a development and bringing revenue, you know, tax dollars. Just wondering what that would possibly look like or, you know.
Yeah, through the chair, ultimately, after development, we estimate the taxes under the current rate to be 130,000, 200-plus per year. And currently, they are estimated at about 73,000.
Okay. And when's the last time there's been any development downtown? Like, you guys?
Sure, yeah. Through, through the chair, I believe it would be the Gardens on Rose, which is 10-plus years ago, and that's a high rise on 20-block rows, I believe. And other than that, there have been some conversions.
All right. Thanks.
Please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Through the chair. I guess I'll frame this in a question momentarily, but I just want to, just, you know, for the sake of my colleagues here, I have to admit some consternation bordering on exasperation with your views on downtown, because I would actually frame it more in the sense of, do you want a viable downtown at all? I mean, have you actually walked downtown or been downtown recently? Because my view is ultimately, without people, you don't have commercial opportunities or business opportunities. So given that city administration recommended to approve this, I'm assuming it was based on some assessment of the downtown core, and just a basic search of Collier's Q2 report on some assessment of the downtown core and just a basic search of Collier's Q2 report for commercial space in Regina shows that Regina is at like an over 15% vacancy rate, which is triple, by the way, the suburban vacancy rate. So we've had the Bay leave, we've had the downtown business improvement district here just in the spring saying, we're in trouble, and you guys are worried about a development of 10-plus million dollars on one half block? Get as many people down there as you can. Like, this is ridiculous. So, thank you. So maybe, again, with my question, on what basis did you make the approval of this recommendation from a market assessment?
Go ahead, Mr. Mario.
Through the chair, yeah, we did have discussions with the applicant around sort of the viability of commercial space. Certainly, we started from that position when we took in the application, because ultimately, that's really what the downtown really envisions, a really active, vibrant storefront streetscape. So that really was the desired outcome. However, I think we would acknowledge that those policies and regulations were adopted during a different period when there was a lot more optimism and it seemed like a more viable proposition. I will say that within, you know, within the time passed, going back to 2023, we did amend the zoning bylaw to give a little bit of flexibility to accommodate decisions like this, so just to give a little bit of flexibility based on some criteria. One of those criteria is market viability. And, you know, if I could summarize the other two, it's just kind of the impact on the streetscape. So in terms of market viability, you know, we had those discussions with the applicant and in terms of their feasibility and ability to rate, to rent the space. And really what it came down to is if we required it, then the project probably just wouldn't happen. That's the state of affairs right now. It's the truth. Will that change over time? Yeah, maybe, but we really don't know when that will be. So we look at this application and the benefits of it and weigh them against what, you know, potential outcomes could be if we forego the opportunity. So that's how we arrived at the approval recommendation.
Mr. Gasser, you have a question to admit?
I do.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. So I'm just curious if you know offhand what the average tax base of similar properties downtown would be, like a neighboring property, for example?
Through the chair, I don't have that information in front of me.
Okay. Would you imagine that it'd be like about the same amount that we're expecting for this, or would it be significantly more, significantly less on neighboring properties?
Through the chair, I think it would depend on the tax class and also the intensity of development. So looking in the immediate vicinity, I do have some higher intensity development, high rise office buildings and things like that. So certainly, yeah, we would be getting a lot more revenue from those buildings than potentially this one.
Okay. Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Thank you. Yeah, I guess I just, I think for, I guess I don't appreciate my idea being called ridiculous, respectfully. So I'm kind of having a tough time forming my response to it. I guess, you know, I'm willing to support this if we can go through the OCP and the DCD and change the policies that recommend downtown as a central hub that is made of streetfront commercial. Right now, the way that we, the commitment that we've made to the residents of Regina is that we will encourage this kind of development elsewhere. I appreciate that Young Street can have some development like this on it. I think that's a really good point. I think it's a fair point. I also think downtown Toronto has probably more people than all of Regina, and it can support lower intensity in certain parts of downtown because it has access to so many more people that it can sustain a variety of vibrant uses and spaces. My concern is in part that in 48 dwelling units, even if, you know, three people live in each of them, if we have 150 people downtown, I don't think that that's a threshold for the type of development that we're saying that residents downtown will support. That doesn't mean it's a bad development, and it just means that I don't think that this is the place for it. And so I think from a tax perspective, I would expect, and, you know, feel free, someone has access to the information to correct me if I'm wrong, but I would suspect that other developments downtown have significantly higher tax base than this proposal. So while that would be a fair point, I actually think it kind of supports this use, my concerns as well. But my concern isn't about the tax. My concern is about the type of development that we want downtown and where 150 people, 50 families, would be best served by the city and would best fit within the city. So just to reiterate that and to kind of respond to the idea of ridiculousness, I'm prepared to wait 10 years for a downtown development that meets the needs of downtown. I think cities live a long time, and 10 years from a city's perspective is easy. So, thank you.
Ms. Wilson, please go ahead.
I think Commissioner Gasser probably said it far more eloquently. I think the decorum of attacking people's comments of other commissioners, I just want to note that that feels inappropriate. I, and yeah, my issue, the words taken out of my mouth, but it's, my issue is with the density of the project, not the commercial aspect of it. I think just for a downtown to have a vibrant downtown, I would love to see this project anywhere else in the city. And yeah, I think it's a great project. I just don't think it's appropriate with the OCP and our goals for downtown. I think the bids letter really emphasized some of these points if we've looked at that package, and that I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other further questions. I just have one. Seeing that perfect is the enemy of good, and we're trying our best to repopulate downtown in order to justify businesses to come down there, can I have someone from administration, perhaps, comment on what I just said? Who would that be?
Through the chair, I had the same thoughts. Perfect is the enemy of good as we kind of go through this. You know, and I think our report speaks to that. It does achieve some of the goals of the downtown, being, bringing residential activity, activating a longstanding inactive site that is a parking lot, which is not what we want downtown. Coming to a good compromise on the design, which we're really happy about. But I will say that I appreciate all the comments and reservations that have been voiced here. We have had the same conversations in the office around the water cooler and just spending time kind of chewing on this for quite a while. And ultimately, where we come is, as regulators, we look at the reason for the discretionary use, which is for, to assess the impact of residential on 11th Avenue, and we feel confident that it will work and it's an appropriate land use. And that's kind of where we have arrived at our conclusion.
Thanks for that. One observation that I have from some of my travels is that there are climates much warmer than ours that have underground parking everywhere. And we have literally nothing. If you had underground parking in this environment, you could throw up another building, number one. What's holding us back from doing that here? Sort of a why question.
Through the chair, there's certainly nothing in our regulations that's holding it back. I think it's, it really comes down to dollars and cents.
Money.
It's expensive to build underground parking, and the market needs to be there to pay that money back for developers on the project. It might be there for some projects, it might not be there for others. We have had conversations with the developer of the General Hospital Parkade, albeit that's not underground, but there are innovations that have really brought down the cost of parking, so we hope to see more of that.
Thank you for that answer. Mr. Sontag, would you like to close the debate? Okay. I will ask the clerk to start the vote.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Adams.
In favor.
Commissioner Aston.
In favor.
Commissioner Gasser.
Opposed.
Commissioner Morgan.
In favor.
Commissioner Sontag.
In favor.
Commissioner Wilson.
Opposed.
Counselor Rashovich.
In favor.
And you, Mr. Chair. With a vote of six to two, that motion is carried with Commissioners Adams, Aston, Morgan, Sontag, Counselor Rashovich, Counselor Seckles, voting in favor with Commissioner Gasser and Commissioner Wilson, opposed. That motion is carried.
Thank you. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? I'm looking right at you, please. It's not a trick question. Ms. Morgan. Any opposed? Carried.
The meeting is adjourned.